Instead of twenty eight, it's a three day day and I'll be circling for all of them.
You don't have to turn off.
Well, I probably guess I get the instructions out sometime.
But I didn't do that.
Turn your max to freeze.
All right, this is our call to order. This is our meeting in January twenty six, two thousand and sixteen. May you please join me in the pleasure of this. Ready? The gift.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is no report on a closed session. Could I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Someone said it.
That would be Carolyn Jan. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is the time for public comment on items that are not on the agenda. Do we have anyone wishing to speak? Mr. Hills, could you state your name for the record? Just trying to keep our record clean. We're asking everybody to say their name.
My name is Howard Hills. And I wanted to just continue a little bit of dialogue with the board about some issues that have been addressed in recent meetings. You know, it's interesting because I went back and listened and at the December eighth meeting, the board president said that his highest priority for the year was for the board to get along, get united, presented united and all that. And then at the last meeting, Board Member Brown made a comment about, you know, people accusing the board of being crazy, she used the word crazy. And, you know, the thing about it is, I thought about it a lot. You know, I think that with respect to the goal of having the board get along together and be united as being your highest priority, I think it's a misplaced priority and I really hope that the board goes forward with the project that you talked about last week of having a governance workshop. And I hope that it's public and I hope that people can participate. And I also think that maybe some members of the public should put some governance issues on the agenda. Because, you know, I think everybody's talking about the governance workshop, the new superintendent and the California School Board Association. And, you know, there's this feeling, I think sometimes Board Member Brown, there's this kind of bunker mentality or besiegement, the sense of besiegement that you have. And, you know, I really think that it's not about, I don't think it's about who likes who or who gets along with who. And then another big emphasis I hear when I go back and listen is this emphasis from the superintendent about teamwork. And, you know, that's a theme that the California School Board also emphasizes a lot. And the fact is, this isn't about us, it isn't about personalities, it isn't about teamwork. It's about the issues and the substance of the governing process. And in the weeks and months ahead, as I say, I want to continue a dialogue about this because I think that the board needs a new governing philosophy. One in which people on the board don't feel that the public perceives them as crazy or the board feels like the most important value in the governing process is unity or teamwork or these things. The fact of the matter is that diversity and a robust debate and getting it right on the merits and getting it right on the rights of teachers, the rights of students, the rights of parents, being substantively correct and getting it right is what should be the highest value, not the cosmetic appearance of unity or teamwork or, you know, this feeling that you're victims because people criticize you. You're not victims because, somebody said that this is a thankless, one of the school board members said this is a thankless job.
I think you're only just like, you're out of time, but I'd like to extend the courtesy of thirty seconds if you can.
Okay, thank you very much. The point is that, you know, you're not victims and somebody from the school board said, this is a thankless job. Well, it's not a thankless job, it's a good job, it's a positive job. And having people care enough and take you seriously enough to come in here and tell you what they think you're doing wrong is not an attack on you. It's really showing respect for you and taking you seriously and taking the task before you seriously. So you should begin to change your perception of it when people come in and criticize because we're not calling you names, we're not saying that you're crazy or anything like that. So I thank you very much for the extension of my time.
You're welcome. Our next section is the Section Ten Reports. Is there somebody else? I'm sorry. Our next section is Section Ten, which is reports. Our student representative, Mr. Langton. Am I saying your name right?
Yeah, Langton.
What you got for us?
Okay, so final this week, our high school Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. We have periods one, two, testing tomorrow, periods three and five, testing on Thursday, and periods four and six, testing on Friday. Class starts at eight during finals and ends at one ten. So each class, I think, gets two hours and twenty-five minutes with a break in between for ten minutes. So this year, because our exams are at this time, we actually have formal this week, this week, sorry, excuse me. We have formal this week on Saturday. It starts at eight, I believe, and goes to, I want to say ten thirty, I should know that.
Eleven.
Eleven, yeah, eight to eleven. And what they're doing this year, they, to check students in, we have to bring our student ID cards and they're having a teacher or administrator at the front scanning your ID cards so the process goes much smoother. You can still get in it if you forget to bring it, you'll just have to go to a different section. So that's something new they're trying. Our dance is at a location, Ermine, it's the company that we promote our dances with, In Effect Productions. They opened up their own venue, so we're trying that this year and Ermine's pretty cool. Our theme's Disney, happiest, happiest name of all, so yeah, it's kind of interesting. I'm trying to think what else we have going. Oh, we had our, we had a pep assembly, so as you all know, our pep assemblies are usually in the gym. But because we usually use the pep assembly to promote our dance, so all of our ticket sales are on Friday, we did a outdoor pep assembly last week and it actually went quite well. We were, I thought, I thought it went well, the students gave positive feedback, so that was a new thing we might try in the future. Ticket sales are going up every day this week, just because it's the last week. So tomorrow they are sixty-five with ASB, seventy-five without ASB, and then it increases Thursday to seventy with ASB, eighty without ASB, and then next day seventy-five without, with ASB, eighty-five without ASB, just because it's the last week.
And do you have any feeling about how well attended the winter formal will be this year?
Um, I think at the moment, I know on, at the start of this week, we sold four hundred and thirty tickets, which is better, a lot better than we usually are. Usually, our ticket sales were behind the last week. So, yeah, we're hoping, hoping ticket sales are going to keep on going up, that's the goal. I mean, we sold the most tickets we ever had this formal, or last homecoming, so we have to keep that train going.
That's not like a good feeling. Anybody else have any questions?
So will your spirit week then be next?
Yes, and then we're actually having another pep assembly just because the students can experience the normal pep assembly in the gym. So we're actually having a follow-up pep assembly. It won't be, you know, with the core, but it'll still have all the games, probably have some dances in it. And then that will take place next week, so yes, next week we do have spirit week. I think we have the days that we've decided on so far, we've, we decided on coop day, so try to dress it like tourists, I know. What are the days that we pick? I think we picked, we ruled out Western Day, so coop day. Um, oh, I think we have CEOs and business bros. I think that's one of the themes we decided on. I can't remember off the top of my head, but I know those two we decided. So that's, yeah, that's what's going on at our, at LBHS at the moment.
Well, thank you for coming. Any other set of questions? Uh, I know this is by this time, so we will not be offended if you leave.
Yeah, I gotta study. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Is everyone in the booth or rep? Up there with you?
Yes, I'll just stay here since I can see.
Yep.
Is that fine?
Yes.
So he reported well for the high school, all the comings and goings for the high school. The middle school also has finals this week. They maybe aren't quite as stressed out as our high school kids are, but it's good practice for them and I'm sure they're anxious about their grades. So things are going well. We presented our sunshine agreement to the board for tonight and we are getting ready to start new semesters at the schools and looking forward, positive outlook.
Thank you, Mandy. Margaret, is yours up for CSEA?
Yes, first I want to thank Mr. West, Ms. Winston and Shannon Soto for our Subcommittee on Payroll. We had an interesting and a big learning loop and I will use that on all of our sites. We did have an issue with our payroll, but the payroll really turned out to be exactly what the contract says. And so therefore, we need to really move in the direction of the contract, which is where Mr. West was taking us. And therefore, we have gone through the process of adjusting how that's going to happen as far as the way he would see it happening. That's the way the contract is read forever. Nobody knows when it was ever changed to the way it's been being done now. And Claudia Redford said she's worked here thirty years and it's been the same way. So we all grew with this experience. And what we did is we did an MO, MO creating some language change on other issues. I have taken it through the six-ten process and had it ratified yesterday at the quote party and business meeting that I called as an emergency so we could have that done. And thanks to, actually, I know the direction is through Mr. West, but to Shannon Soto, she has taken on an enormous task in making sure that the transparency that happens with our eighty-some members that really got some good pay in September and when December came around, it wasn't quite what they were expecting, to get them informed of what they need to know. So, starting the week of February, there will be, Ms. Soto and Shade will be at each site with a meeting with our people and actually has prepared for each person that requested the way the payroll unit will fall through the last pay period of July, so that there are no surprises. She's even gone farther to contact Schools First, which will be available to help people if they get that, you know, strange month and they need a little, because Schools First actually offers some great advanced payroll situations. That's far beyond what a school district has to do. So I really want to say, we all joked on this because it was affecting people, but what we really learned is, the next time anything happens, we will all be sitting down together and reading our contract and moving forward in a much more calmer approach to this. Well, you get those fires and you start to put them out and so this was a good learning experience for all of us, but I want to really say administration handled this with, you know, reached out to the members, the members are quite aware that they are here and this is not meant in any way to go over our contract and the irony was, it's what it says. So I really truly feel, thank you, Mr. West, for really stepping forward and making this happen because it really, it kind of proves, even in a hiccup, you can fix things and make it work for our members. On another note, we don't have the party yesterday, I want to thank administration for coming over. We had four or five people from San Jose there, two executive directors. They were very impressed that everyone from administration, and I know the board was busy doing things and it's, you know, they were just so impressed that that many people took the time. And there was a mixture of certificate and I classified staff and some of my personal friends that came. So just thank you again because that's just one more thing that shows how we all work together. And on a final note, we have already had our first reclass meeting of the year with Ms. Winston and of course, I praise her all the time because she is so organized, brings the documents so that we can review what needs to be done. And some of these decisions, you'll see as we move forward, but they are easy decisions because we're really, our goal is for the students and the district. And as things change, so does positions have to change and have to adjust to our times. So we're excited and at the same time, it's a really good experience to have such a, where we can sit down and work with what other districts are doing, see what they're offering, how it's, you know, just the usage of a job description as to make sure that we're in align to other districts. So I have all of that. And then I'll just pass this around. This was the Focus Magazine, I'm just writing a little bit more, that was the article that was written by CSEA in regards to the curriculum for work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have possible presentations from our boosters, PTA. School club, either?
Thank you for letting me come. It's very rare that I get to be here with everything going on, so I apologize for the timeframe. I just wanted to mention that, you look very formal. I wanted to mention that our PTA members have increased. They continue to increase every year, which is an amazing thing and I'm very proud that we're part of a fourth district PTA, which is the largest in the nation. So it's, it means a lot to be, having our numbers increase and therefore our impact, so wanted to report that. I wanted to also say that we're going through our nominations right now and looking for members in good standing to be nominated in the February meetings at each of the schools, so anybody interested, looking for those leaders. So nominations take place in February and then the elections will take place in March. I was very appreciative to be invited to the D-LAC meeting last week and I have to tell you, that community is phenomenal and I really enjoyed it. I enjoyed meeting with those families and I really, really spoke to Johnny about making sure that that communication increased. It's one of my biggest questions to them in English, Fanglish, that I tried to do from learning a million years way back, but was, you know, whether, how they felt their communication was. And honestly, it was very low. They don't feel like they really understand what is going on at each of the schools and they don't really hear it from their kids, you know, most of us don't hear it from our kids. So I really, really told Johnny, I want to make an effort in helping, using, you know, using that. That's one of our roles as a PTA, is to increase that communication, so we're really going to work hard at that. And then lastly, we don't have a coffee break until March. It'll be March 17th, but we'll take this one off.
Tammy, did they specifically mention email communication?
Yeah, I asked that question. Well, I asked them how they prefer to communicate or, you know, what their, I mean, for instance, things like the dance coming up at the high school to events at the elementary schools. They, you know, they, I asked them, are you getting any emails or are you getting the callouts? And they do, I know Johnny tries to do his Spanish callouts, but that's, that's certain, for certain things, certain bigger events, not, they're not going to do it at every, you know, smaller, smaller event. And they said that England, it would be beneficial to at least get those emails in Spanish, which it didn't sound like they were getting a lot of those. I don't know. That's, I was going to talk to you because I'm very unaware of what the district does in that regard versus, you know, what we can do because we also have our own PTA stuff, I mean, and we even have merged with, I think, with all the principals. I think most all the principals in the PTAs are now, you know, on task work. It's a kind of joint email that goes out, which I live by. So it's just, you know, I was going to do Johnny and I'm sure, you know, through Johnny to the district, you know, work something out because we have several parents that would be more than happy, rather than putting it all on him, to put those emails out and translate them and do it on a weekly basis. It's been easy, I mean, I really think it's an easy thing to do.
Because when we started that, making that effort, it was like the third day packets.
Yeah.
And so it was really effort to have, translated and printed out in Spanish.
Yeah, and I asked that.
I haven't asked recently, I just didn't know whether we had transferred that over to all the computer.
And they really are missing a lot, like just, you know, the things, I mean, they, it was so clear their, their desire to get involved because they were all in this room, they want to know how to help their kids, they're really trying hard and, you know, most of them work so they can't come to those PTA meetings or other meetings, so we're going to really work at that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see where we are here first. We're going to take a speaker out of order because she asked to speak on the public comment and I guess she wasn't here at that time. So would she leave? Could you come up? And would she, could you state your name for the record when you begin your speech and they've been asking us to, which of your people did it for?
Yeah, good evening, everybody. So first of all, I want to thank everybody, thank everybody's contribution to make the stream video online. That really helps, especially for working parents. So I got to really watch the meeting that I missed, that I cannot be here. And during January 12th meeting, I, I heard a very exciting news regarding the math pathway topic. That is during the thirty-seven minutes to thirty-eight minutes where I heard our assistant superintendent, Mrs. Messenger, said we're going to improve it and we're going to share and get a board approval in the study meeting. So even though I don't see that on the agenda, I do want to make a couple of comments. So about one year ago, two weeks, two months, actually short to one year, the community talked about the LBUSD math pathway and we had a lot of good discussion. One of the things that the parents of the community bring, brought to the board is the lack of the parents' involvement. And some parents worked very hard. We compared nine out of twelve of school districts in Orange County. We tabulate the result and present it to the board and to the community during March tenth board meeting. However, none of this input got taken into account of the December May, also approved in the March tenth board meeting. As a result, some of the kids actually is kind of stuck in the, they went through the summer grade program. Some of them worked very hard during the summer, they did very well, and now they're basically escaped one grade. There is control also, which is not a good thing because, you know, we, we, we're trying to get the student to understand more, but because of the summer grade program, those kids are capable. If you put them in normal class, they'll get bored. But we settled them in eight weeks. While we had, at that point, some parents suggest there is a better way to do it. However, failed to listen to the parents, we failed to incorporate in our math pathway. So, when I heard Mrs. Messenger say that we have this one new one coming out, I got a little bit concerned because as one of the parents who worked extremely hard, put together this recommendation based on the data and also a parent that had a kid in the situation, I didn't know what the change will be. So again, we're talking about the same thing, community engagement, get the parents involved. We all make mistakes. We already made mistakes once, let's not repeat it. Already two minutes?
Thank you. You're over your time, but I'd like to give you thirty seconds to wrap up your thoughts.
Okay, another thing is the weighted GPA for the honor. I know at one conference talk about that, it's also during March tenth. The justification that comes is UC system does not really combat GPA. But is that a prob, is there a problem that we're trying to solve by remove the weighted GPA from honor class? The student who took honor class, they take the challenge, they put in actual effort. And why not, why can't we honor and recognize the actual effort?
Okay, I'm sorry about the time it's up.
This is part of the change that was introduced during.
Right, so let me just, that is going to come back on the agenda February ninth and we'd love to have you come back at that time because you'll have obviously a chance to comment at that time.
Okay, okay, I appreciate that. I just want to make sure that I may change this community name, I may change this administration name, of the board approval. It's precious time of the student's life. They are young, but they really should not afford to waste their time.
Great, thank you. Well, if someone had to come back, Ms. Messenger, why don't you get back to you on your, what I think is a question?
Is Alka initiate a communication with you, Ms. Messenger, so we can talk about offline?
You'll get back to you later on. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your time.
No problem. Okay, we're going to go back to Section Ten, Board Member Comments. Can you carry it?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Oh, okay.
I'm just going to slide through.
Sure, that's fine. I attended several of the PTA meetings and just Thurston had the juvenile officer come spring, but also the new person who's taking place, her place, she's going back on another assignment. They rotate and it's Cornelius, a young man, and they were being, they were there to talk to parents about the things that they see with youth in the community. It was informative, but it was interesting to me that what they really got to was what parents may really be concerned about are the handheld devices and the cyber world. That that more than things out in the community, I mean, obviously that takes vigilance in knowing where your kids are, but that's the real issue. That's what they deal with and they deal a lot with sex things. And the fact that not only is it punishable, but it's not only the receiver, it's the center. And that it's just for middle school kids particularly, that the, the idea of what's involved in that just goes over their heads as far as how it can affect them. And it's pretty unhappy what happens a lot of times. Then, also interesting to me, and I think we provide this service through our PTAs, a number of parents did not know that they had a perjury for example. And that they were asking and they were wondering what time was and then the details of if you're coming or going from work or from a specific activity, if you're still on a perjury violation. So it was informative for those parents that they weren't aware of that. El Moro was getting ready for their jogathon and they're working with Mr. Duddy closely on the idea that he has for his STEM, seeing STEM room and for wrapping that up and having it be ready to start at the first of the year. At the high school, they had a long presentation and has so much to share with ROP, CTE classes and also the Naviots. And it's just a wealth of information on those classes to really inform the parents that are there so they can help students understand what they could do with those courses and, and things that we're pursuing with the shared credit, all the different things that will be coming in addition to what we have now. She had the handouts there at her office, it's right there. So it was also very informative. I stopped in at the presentation that the ROP that they did that night, which again was really informative and they had a number of parents and students there. And it's just really, it really is important to give the information out because we try to provide it in a number of ways, but to have parent nights like that where they can come and realize that their, their college band student can definitely benefit from some of these classes and in ways that it will affect what they may choose as a major and then also gives them a leg up to maybe get in an internship in something even before they start college. We had a policy meeting, which really, I would, I don't see Amy here tonight, but she's really, she's keeping us updated because even some policies that we had just on last May had legal changes that took effect at the first of the year and so we need to, and it's really good that we're, those come to us so that we're in compliance with the changes in the law. And I would just compliment Dean on the presentation that JFMC made, he had asked me to sit in for her and that was so much financial information and that's the purpose of that meeting is to make sure that the different ones who attend get that in-depth knowledge on all the different financial aspects of the decision. Then I just had one comment in an article we talked about, well, we didn't talk about, but at the, at the presentation that Bob Beltrier put together on the cyber issue and the fact that kids really have a lot of stress with what they call the fear of missing out and that you might not get a text at two in the morning and then you go to school and they'll talk about it and you won't know and that causes a lot of anxiety for kids. But it's within a recent business section article, that's also the case for adults. And it's a fear of missing out in their work environment in that you won't know something because there is so much information available and things are changing so fast. So it causes a lot of, a less productive person and a lot of anxiety. So it's just affects not just kids. And I think, that's it.
Jen, thank you for inviting Jen MC, appreciated that. Farm needed me. The Scopera Chef Challenge last night was really fun and the food was delicious, so, and thank you so much for some of the administrators coming. I think it meant a lot to them, I assume it did, so thank you. It was, it's a great event. Dee, thank you for asking me to go to Craft Room Council. Really so fun to go because it was such a great, and you see tonight, we're going to be hopefully approving these, these new courses that the teachers were so fired up about. And the most important thing was, it was, it was kid-focused. Every class, they, is addressing a need that they feel is lacking, you know, across the board and I just, I'm so impressed by it. So thank you for letting me do that. And I also want to say thank you to staff for working so diligently to get the appropriate video streaming equipment and making sure it works on a E for running it, I guess. I know that, you know, Dee brought it forward, thank you, and but in the board, we decided to go forward. Little tentative, but if it makes people happy, that's a good thing and I think we have the right people on board. And again, to staff, IT, Dean for the money, Lisa for making sure we don't step in anything. It's, I just appreciate that and so I think as a board, we can, we, when we work together, good things happen.
And just to put it on that as a topic, we had a conversation from a long time ago that never came before.
came to fruition, Carl Swartz, former board member, is really pleased.
Oh.
Love it.
The curriculum committee, I've never wanted to be a teenager again. Oh, so longing to go to high school, look at those classes. The teachers are so exciting, they're so professional, and their presentations, they're on the edge of their seats because they're just, it's like, I don't know, they look like little kids in that excitement, right? To see them talk about something they want to bring because they feel there's that need, there's that piece that's missing, if they just fulfill that. And Scott.
Food cup.
Food cup. Actually enrolled in a college class so that he can make sure that he's teaching a college level class for the dual.
Well, because it's good to be for dual classes.
Right, the fact that he did, he was just like on his own time and dime, and it's just, it was amazing. I was just, I was touched. I was like, this is why you're a school board member. I get it, you know? This is so fun. And then I love policy, and so the board policies were great. And Victoria attended a conference where it talked about 800, how many laws affected our policies?
Eight hundred and thirty-four.
Eight hundred and thirty-four law changes that affect our board policies. And so, you know, kudos, kudos, kudos to Amy for staying on top of it. It's just, it's amazing because they're not all educational policies, they're just changes in law that affect, you know, policies for us. And then I did get to witness for the first time a child who really had this huge fear of missing out goes out of sleepover, and a poor kid who needed to sleep with his cell phone. And I thought so bad for him, I was like, I'm sorry, we don't do that now. So he kept sneaking out and getting some, I just, I don't understand. I could have like a thousand messages to get you on tomorrow morning. Mostly everyone has to go to bed, like they really do, I saw this. I'll help you with the work. But he really had it, he really, he just dug in it, and he just felt connected it. But what he said, I was like, it really does, they. And I wouldn't want this out, we know our kids do miss something, so we have that same. We're different fears. So that's all I got.
Yep. And I attended through a physical event, but being, I think it was very important, very informative, and I appreciate being able to work in that regard. Also went to the Chef Challenge, and that's pretty interesting, good food, and winners and losers.
Every year.
Every year. So it was a lot of fun. That's it for me. Superintendent, Mr. West is our acting person tonight.
Sure, yeah. Just wanted to keep it a day. I know there was a detox facility that was in the Top of the World area. We were preparing with the city to do kind of a town hall meeting up there for next, to still renew supply on this week, and it's scheduled for next Tuesday at 6:00 PM. So just want to make sure that that got communicated out. And again, you know, it was nice to see as we have people of our own, Margaret, order to go up to the state level and be recognized for all that she does here for us, but also see them come down and share their nice video DVD about how that annual convention was and to share that with all the staff here. So it was kind of nice to do that and appreciate that. And Shannon Diaz has done a great job on the payroll, and you know, we have so many staff that every day are supporting all the operations at the sites, in the classrooms, outside the classrooms, at the central office administration. We just appreciate it.
Thank you. Darlene?
Kudos to Margaret again, we got to have cake again. I hope you weren't high, we get to have it, but it'll be fun every time. And congratulations, that was pretty impressive. Our elementary teachers are finishing up their coaching with our math coach from Oak Mifflin this week and really enjoying it. And I talked to Shannon Keever, the coach today, and she said she is just amazed at the progress that teachers are making and their openness to letting her come into their classroom and work with them. But that is quite astounding, so that's really exciting to hear about. So we're figuring out what our implementation is and expressions and how we're doing, and the coach has been instrumental in helping that happen. We will be meeting this week, the grade level chairs and I, to talk about that progress and to see exactly where we're at and what our needs are for future. We know that math is our biggest challenge right now for all schools that are implementing Common Core due to the extreme changes that are called for in application-based mathematics. And so that's a big topic. We're meeting constantly with various groups of teachers to talk about it. The middle school and the high school teachers, as Ledge is talking about, have been, we've been meeting with them to talk about how is that implementation going, to evaluate the progress of students in that program, and what are the necessary revisions that we need to make. There won't be great things, but there are some things that we want to do, just as we promised that we would continue to look at our practice and continue to refine that, make sure that we're doing the best thing we can for kids. So that's our goal. We will be presenting that update on February 9th, so we'll have a presentation and be welcome for public comment at that time. The ELA/ELD adoption committee is attending the Materials Fair in Orange County Department of Education tomorrow, so we'll get our first look at looking at various programs that blend both English language arts and English language development. So that's exciting. And I wanted to thank Tammy Scandarian for coming to the D-LAC. I wasn't there, I was at a conference, Mike and I were at a tech conference. Lisa Baracas and Tammy both presented about what's happening at the high school, what's happening at PTA. Our principals have been taking turns coming to each of those meetings, and the folks are so appreciative of that time and that connection that they're making. And Johnny's doing a great job, really connecting our English learner parents to all the things happening in the district, and thank you for taking the time to do that. It was very important. Thank you very much.
Lisa?
All right. Well, I'll be the last then to congratulate Margaret once again for her Member of the Year honor. And it was nice having the folks from CSCA come in and really see all of the support, you know, that we get to Margaret because she's been such a good collaborator with us. So I also wanted to notify you or let you know that our classified employees of the year, if you didn't already know, we have identified our category winners. So I'll just let you know who those are right now. In the Child Nutrition category, Brian Armstrong, who's our central kitchen manager at Laguna Beach High School. In the Maintenance and Operations category, William Guido at Top of the World, our maintenance worker there. In the Office and Technical category, Debbie Nash, who supports our Special Education and Student Services Department here at the district. Para Educator and Instructional Assistance category, Betsy Klein, who's an instructional assistant in Special Education over at Laguna Beach High School. And in Support Services, Peggy Legault, who is our health clerk at Laguna Beach High School. So they did very well this year at the high school. We will be honoring them in an upcoming board meeting this spring. And then stay tuned in the coming weeks because we will be announcing our overall district winner and surprising that person on site. And then we just started our Teacher of the Year process, so that's underway, and the Teacher of the Year this year will come from El Moro. So stay tuned for more information on that.
Thank you. Moving to section 11, our public hearing tonight.
Can I ask just a quick question? I think this is probably coming, but Darlene, about the Google conference, are we going to hear about that?
Oh, yes, I probably should tell you about that. It was, it was another whirl. First of all, their belief that food should never be more than 100 feet from any, any worker was amazing to see. Cookies, drinks, and things like that. More importantly, it was just the environment that they've created for people, and I think that's exactly what Mike's trying to do with our 4CLE environments. It was interesting to see some of the furniture was very much like our furniture. So it's like we're, that's setting a big trend, and I think we're looking at student learning in the same way that they're looking at making it comfortable for their employees. I mean, they bring their dogs to work. They have a barber shop and a hair salon. I need to go in there, but I can go. They have a huge quad with activities, and people were playing volleyball. They had a couple cafeterias. It was pretty amazing to see that. And wonderful speakers, they're, I can't think of his title like Mike know, but did a magnificent speech, and he's not an educator, but talking about why technology is important as a tool and learning that that is a tool. But he did a wonderful job of seamlessly talking about that. So it was a great week. Coaching was a big deal. We learned a lot about coaching and have some ideas and thinking about how we can continue to coach our teachers and give them their opportunity. So it was really exciting.
Thanks.
Exciting.
My dear.
Sorry. Well, now the section of the public hearing, it is 6:38. And open public hearing on Sunshine Proposal, the number four, for 2016, 2017. Laguna Beach Unified Department Association and Laguna Beach Unified School District's wet proposal for a successor collective varie in American region. Special items filed for public comment. During that, we will close the meeting at 6:39. Move it out to our consent calendar. Can I have a motion for approval, please, someone? Scott?
Second.
Uh, not your second. Yes. Okay. Does anybody have anything they'd like to pull? During that, I would like to ask for a motion to approve, twelfth, A. Did I miss something? Okay, 12A through K.
Is that safe?
On favor?
I think yes.
Oh, public comment, I'm sorry. Consent? No. Oh, on favor? I thought we did.
We did.
We did. And we still are. All right, so going to 13, Presentation of the Must-Be-Swain Actual Fourth of December. This is Mr. West.
Okay, so as of December 31st, we do, you can see on page show, beyond the category range 1 to 2 or 13.2, as it's able to agenda, the property taxes do come in December, so we do have that $25 million in property taxes which funds our cash flow. You can see in December, we're up to about $24 million in expenditures, so they keep this flesh, and we do need that April receipts to kind of keep that funding going throughout the year. Page 13.3 is our first interim standing of where the district has on the ending fund balance for the general fund, and in the bottom half of the page, the ed code related to statement of for economic uncertainty and unrestricted restrictive balances. That's, that stays the same in the first interim until we bring back the second interim. So we'll bring back second interim probably March, in March, it's due by March 15th, so we're building that now. That second interim will be the spring board for our adopted budget as we go through. So month end accounting did shift in order to get fox eyes on the front page, we did shift the interfund transfers to the third page below the monthly cash flows. And we added the CERP trust fund. We did put that in in December to the California Trust Fund. Unfortunately, that was before the markets of markets started to decline, so you know, we're still, the markets are still under the problem. But you can see the monthly cash balance and projected ending balances, the fund balance of each fund on that page 13.4. And each, each fund balance sheet and income statement is, for each fund is presented on the following pages, and the last two pages, 13.22 and 13.23, have all those, the services and other operating expenditures, so it details that, all 5,000 project codes, budget, encoverance, actuals, and balances. It's in the same format that we always present them.
We had an interesting Sculpire endowment meeting just after the market collapsed.
Yeah.
Slightly grim faced, but it's a long-term investment. And luckily they're diversified. All right, anything else, folks? Any public comment on item number 13? Mr. Hills. Again, would you just, for the record, identify yourself, because I want to be proud.
My name's Howard. I actually wanted to comment during the public hearing on the number 11, but I didn't hear, and then I didn't hear, and then the meeting ended. So I guess I'll sort of fold together my comments. I just wanted to say that at the last meeting, the board president suggested that I direct some questions to Mr. West when I had technical questions about budgets, and I appreciated that very much, and I took advantage of that offer. And I just want to say that Mr. West has been fantastic since that period. He and I have exchanged emails with a number of questions, and he's been very helpful to me in understanding. I think that one of the concerns I had about the item number 11 and the contract negotiations is that, as I told you back on November 9th, I said, I can't quite figure out what you're doing with these reserve funds, but I'm going to work on it, and I'm going to study it, and I'm going to figure it out, and I've been doing that. And I'm concerned about the fact that the, you know, there's been, if you look at, there's been a series of actions that began September 22nd with a $6 million interfund transfer, and then the October 20th, there was, there was one action item on September 27th, there was two information items and two action items on October 27th. There was one information item and three action items on November 9th, two action, two information items and two action items on January 12th. And then there's one information item tonight that all pertain to, you know, this issue of the facilities, the use of the interfund transfers for the facilities for the CIP, and the amounts of money that had been allocated and moved in the interfund transfers. And I don't know, I'm still studying it, trying to figure it out, but the bottom line seems to me that we're not, we've got $17.9 million in Fund 17, and we're not using that money to address the $30.5 million pension fund unfunded liability that's going to go on the books in 2017, but we are using $10 million of it for the CIP for building program. If I were the faculty members, you know, we used two of it for the retirement benefits, for the health benefits, but I would want to keep promises to the teachers and the employees in the use of that money before I did building projects. That's just my personal opinion, I'm just a citizen voter taxpayer. But I'm going to continue to say this, if I can have.
You have 30 seconds.
I do want to put the board on notice that item number 10 on October 27th was a paper by the superintendent and by Mr. West, and that paper is a case study in school governance, and I'm thinking about putting that, seeking to put that item on the agenda to go back and look at that paper, because there's a lot going on in that paper that needs to be understood a lot better than I think anybody in the public does. I also want to put you on notice, and I'll talk about this more, I'm going to say this and talk about it during the board paper, because there's an issue, there's an issue about the amendments to the board policies that was done in order to do these interfund transfers that I want to raise to the board, but since I'm out of time, I'll do that during the board.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on, oh, we have, we need to vote on this.
No, this is it. Yeah, but we can make, we can make comments.
Oh, yes, I'm going to say it.
Thank you for always getting back to sometimes I have more questions than I should be asking. And I appreciate Mr. Hill bringing stuff, and it's questions I've asked, a couple I hadn't, but I like the fact that you share it with us all so we see that information and that you're always available. I really appreciate it.
Okay, what else? Moving on. Number 14, Presentation of Facilities Master Plan Update. This is Mr. West again.
Jeff, you can see the company board can do, he has a PowerPoint also, and we have a lengthy plan. This is a plan that's been updated. We did come up with the first Facilities Master Plan 10-year draft last year, and we're committed to bring an annual vision to the board each year. It doesn't mean that individual actions.
Steve has it, yes.
What you can go through. It doesn't mean that individual actions of work can take, it can take all the time to do something mid-time and do other things. This is just kind of a plan for us, so we kind of have a guidance of what we're looking down the road for in our vision. So with that, Jeff, we can begin to talk about some of these again and how we modify that plan.
Yeah, but it's not coming up.
And this plan is a, this is, again, an informational ladder for tonight, so we're not asking you to approve this plan. We're looking to give you a view of it, get feedback on it, and then we'll bring it and prove it back at a later meeting.
Mike's going to come up and help us with that.
We could, you do have, I think, handouts of the slides, so we always can, kind of the slides can kind of catch up to it if you want, or we can kind of proceed with the presentation.
Oh, we got it, I think we're closed.
There we go.
Here we go.
It's because you woke up. Because it was on here, no slide.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. West. As Mr. West mentioned, this is an update to show what changes we've made to the previously approved Facilities Master Plan last year. As Mr. West mentioned, this is an update to show what changes we've made to the previously approved facilities master plan last year. What we'll cover is a brief recap of how we got to that first approved plan. And we really want to focus in on the changes that have occurred since. So we'll talk about some demographics and the data that we're seeing there, as well as some modifications to some of the existing scope that was in that plan and some project additions. Lastly, we're going to cover projects that we took part of in our specific site master plans with the architecture firms that we retain and show you the projects that we are not including in this version of the ten-year plan for discussion. And so we can get additional feedback, and we'll be very clear about what we didn't update in this plan and explain why. So the, as far as the recap goes, we had three facility study sessions, special sessions last year prior to the approval of the master plan on January twenty-seventh. The master plan is very robust and comprehensive. But I'm happy to say that almost all of the projects that we've promised or that we thought we could get done by the summer of, by the end of summer of two thousand fifteen, we were able to accomplish. So in the next slide, there are two very significant projects we were not able to accomplish. And it was the field renovations at Thurston Middle School and Top of the World. So when you see the percentages, I explained what was not accomplished. And the reason for the large percentage gap difference there is because it was based on the cost estimates. And the Thurston field cost estimate and Top of the World field cost estimate was very high compared to the rest of the projects. We did not accomplish the gym or theater ventilation slash air conditioning, but that is something that we have rolled into the analysis with Schmatter Electric. So it's not something that we've forgotten, but it's something that we're trying to tie into any potential improvement in all of our mechanical systems and controls, because it would make sense to do all that at once. I'll now get into some of the updated enrollment data. We had recently completed our enrollment projections, but first I want to give a little history of our enrollment. It's a very large U-shaped curve going back to the nineteen seventies. And thank you, Mr. Blaber, for helping me dig through the archive files and finding some of that information. But you can see we had a steady decline through basically the middle of the nineties. And since then, it's been on a gradual increase, and it, it has slightly decreased from last year to this year. This year's enrollment projections, which is on this next slide, show that we're, we're going slightly down over the next five years. One point that I'd like to make on enrollment projections is the first year out can be fairly accurate, but every year thereafter gets, gets pretty tricky. So usually, if you want to make decisions based off of enrollment projections, look at the first three years. There are factors that are not being considered here that could change. And one example of that is when you hit a recession. A lot of times, public school districts, when we face a recession, increase in enrollment, because you get a lot of the private school kids, where their parents pull them back in public schools. And I think we might have seen a lot of that in that last recession, the Great Recession, as our enrollment began to spike all the way through two thousand and ten. So this is assuming what we know today without taking into account any of those alternative factors. So this is based on what we call business as usual with the trends that we know today.
But Jeff, we, we saw a spike with the kids coming from private school, but we haven't really seen a decline, even though things are getting pretty good for a lot of folks right now. It seems like those kids tend to come and stay.
Yeah, I think that there are other factors in addition to that, one being the quality of our schools. Going back into looking at the historical enrollment, Thurston was never very hot. But as we approached the two thousands, it began to not just get more students, more students were going through Thurston and staying into the high school. So a lot of those trends are going to be based on the quality of schools, the economic factors. And then you have redevelopment or communities that start turning over. So you have retirement-aged community members that sell their homes, and younger families move in. So your student generation rate per household increases. So I'll get into what, what sort of updates we've made. And they include a lot of revisions to some of the maintenance scope. And if you look back in the old master plan, you had a lot of interior finish repairs and repainting. Well, a lot of that scope was accomplished with the four CLE initiative. A lot of those rooms have already been renovated and done. In addition, we've been able to accomplish a lot of the cabinetry modifications, demolition, and the patchwork on the drywall with in-house staff. So those cost estimates were based in large part by having outside contractors do the work. But we're able to do a lot of that work in-house, and that's in addition to accomplishing a very significant number of rooms with the four CLE classrooms and the furniture and the flooring, et cetera. Other things that we've done is we have adjusted some of the, the scope based on recent site inspections. In fact, over Christmas break, I was able to complete our facility inspection tool, which is required by the state under the Williams Act. And it really forces you to get into the nitty-gritty and the details of your site. You analyze every single room, all utilities, all the fixtures, all flooring. And so by doing that, we're able to go back and really adjust what, what we had originally in that plan, which was fairly broad, and narrow it down. So in most cases, that resulted in us showing less of a cost to accomplish a lot of that work. We also have heard a lot, and security's been a very big topic for us, especially recently. And so one of the big projects that we're looking at adding is rekeying all over our district. That will allow us to get more of an efficient key system. Right now, if I had my roll of keys, it wouldn't be able to hold it up for more than five minutes, because it's so heavy. But we need to get a, a good key tracking system as well. And right now, we don't have any such system in place, so this would help us greatly. And then we also added a few capital projects. This was also as a result of the architectural drawings for each site. The master plan has showed us a lot of needs, and then speaking with the sites, and we had our, our board study session also showing the plans. We came back and we thought, if, if we do show a need and a desire to add some of the projects. Those projects include replacing the CLC portable at Top of the World and adding a music classroom. And the board had taken action last board meeting to approve the architectural design services for that, so that we could accomplish it by this summer. Also adding, excuse me, shade structures at El Moro Elementary School. Adding a new restroom concession building at Laguna Beach High School. That's a little, a few more years out, but it's something that we heard a lot of need for, especially with us ramping up to Dean Stadium this year. Ideally, we'd look for additional funding sources, outside funding sources to help offset a lot of these costs that you see, like the restroom concession, so maybe we can add additional storage there as well. And then we have adding a two-classroom building at Thurston Middle School. And that's essentially to get rid of the two per, portables that we, we lease out there right now. So when we look at adding all of those projects, not all of the costs were exempt in the last plan. It just wasn't enough, or it was a place over. And you can see that here, we had about one point five million dollars based on providing CLC portable replacement, which ended up being a maintenance project, and a Thurston classroom addition, where we allocated one million for each high school and the middle school for adding classrooms based on what we projected might be a need. So when you look at the cost estimates for the new projects, in addition to the projects that we have already identified, it's about a four million dollar increase in the capital improvement program that we would be requesting once we come back for approval of this plan. There are also some funding changes. And before I get into them, just as everyone reads the detailed facilities master plan update, there are some acronyms used in there in the column. So RRMAs, eighteen restricted maintenance account. The FRRP is Facility Repair Replacement Program. CIP, Capital Improvement Program. And then there's developer fees and Prop thirty-nine and other, there are two separate categories, but essentially it's outside funding sources, grants, rebates, and money from the state. The most significant change I believe that we made, excuse me, in the, the funding was to assign some of the major replacement projects to the FERC. In the first plan that we brought to you last year, we, we didn't assign any of the projects to be funded from the Facility Repair Replacement Program. But looking back at the FERC language, a lot of the projects that we have done and that are planning to do would qualify to use that funding. An example would be a lot of the roofing and the flooring replacements we did last summer actually would be eligible for the FERC funding. What we're proposing in this plan is to put the large lighting and mechanical replacements that were pending work or coming back to you in the spring list to be funded through the FERC. And that's just a, a change that Mr. West and I really wanted to highlight, because that was something we didn't even look at allocating any funding for last year or identify for cost center. So you can see the, and I won't read each one, but there's all the categories that are identified in the FERC summary that would be eligible for FERC funding. Now, there are a lot of projects that we had identified, and I want to focus in now on the ones that we did not include in this master plan update. That is not to say they will not be done, but rather, we're not looking at necessarily having them included over the next ten years. Given what we know today, that can always change. As we look at program growth, enrollment is a factor. Additional programs or program changes that require very specific facilities. This is a document that we intend to at least update annually, and if not more, depending on what the board's actions require us to do in terms of facilities. So on October fifth, we had the study session. It was perfect, I have a perfect timing there. One of the main, major reasons, or I should say a couple of the major reasons we didn't include some of these projects is because of funding restrictions, a lot of them very cost prohibitive, and we would have to either go out for outside financing or, or take a longer time to set aside funding to cover the cost of the project in ten years. We are basing this recommendation on our current enrollment and program growth needs. So this is assuming that the programs we have right now are in place and going to stay. So if we do make changes, then obviously we're going to need to adjust our facilities plan to reflect whatever the board's direction is there. And we also had some overlap with our current initiatives, such as four CLE and doing traditional routine maintenance. So when you go in to replace and demo old cabinets that need to be replaced and replace flooring, a lot of times through routine maintenance, you can create a new flexible space or running environment that might result in something like four CLE that could be used as an alternative function for that row. And I threw the example of their maker space. There's a lot of minimal things there, and it's more of a furniture purchase at that point than it is changing the utility in the room. So the projects that are part of the architectural site master plan that are not in this update include the replacing the portable at El Moro. A lot of that was because we prioritized the CLC portables, because they're much older and more disrepair than El Moro portable, which had a fairly significant portion of work done last year, last summer. Addition of new two-story classroom building at Top of the World. That is something, at least I have identified a spot that if we do need to make a classroom addition, we know where we can put it, there's some existing utilities in the site layout. The renovations at Thurston Middle School, which included the science building, the seven thousand building, where we'll divide it into two rooms. A lot of that has to do with, once we get the new building addition in place and the portable's removed, depending on what sort of programs or needs that we see at that time, it would be better time to do a renovation, because trying to plan it, we don't want to put the cart before the horse. Addition of new classroom building at Laguna Beach High School. We do, we've identified a lot of options, all the way from a three-classroom, single-story addition to a six-classroom, two-story and modernization program of fifteen and a half million dollars. So we have a palette of options, all of them would be fairly difficult, but it's, it's something that, like Top of the World, at least we've identified our best possible location for classroom additions. Something that we were not able to share at the study session, because it was not done yet, was our district office. Our site staff had provided us a survey and feedback and walked around with the architects. And what they had proposed is that the existing buildings were, would cost as much, if not more, than to build new buildings given the age of this facility. So they had shown how we could possibly build a new district office building and renovate this parking lot so they don't lose any, any parking spots. It might be a net even. And we're not proposing any more changes at the baseball field fencing or reconfiguration within the next ten years. And again, that had a series of options. You had a lot of different reorientations, retaining walls, lowering of the field, fixed tape fencing for the entire field, seven hundred and fifty feet, or a retractable fence. So we have a big range there in mind. We'll go through each one here, so you can see the plans. The El Moro Music Building was replacing that portable out front with a new permanent bill, and we had a cost estimate of about one point six million dollars, similar to the Top of the World Music Building that we're looking at doing this summer, except it would be a three-classroom building with operable walls in between versus the two-classroom at Top of the World. The new two-story classroom, and you can see it circled in the yellow dashed lines on the right-hand side. You get a total of six classrooms or rooms worth of space and a cost of about four million dollars to do that project. The Thurston Middle School, you can see we are intending to do the classroom addition, which is the blue highlighted section, and not do the renovations or reconfiguration of existing space. I should mention, a lot of the estimates the architects used for the renovations and reconfigurations was based on a modernization square foot cost, which is typically applied throughout the state based on the significant modernization. In most cases, I, I believe that we could accomplish a substantial renovation for far less than that cost estimate, because a, a lot of it falls within our team maintenance scope that I had discussed earlier, which is far less than what the modernization square foot cost is, which is usually around a hundred and eighty dollars a square foot. The LB, Laguna Beach High School classroom additions, you can see the range there for the three-story single store, or three-classroom, single story, about two point eight million, all the way to that massive modernization, new construction for about fifteen and a half million dollars. This is the district office. This is what the architect came up, and this was based on looking at the amount of staff, the efficiency of space, and then how we can maximize the existing site that we have here. The reason they proposed a two-story building over there is because you notice that there's a slope in the church that sits above it, so you wouldn't get into any of the view issues, it would stay at or below there, provide a larger boardroom to support more, more welcoming and more open environment for the community and our board. And then some small conference office spaces. And again, this is, this is an ideal pie in the sky, but at least it was something that we were able to look at. And, and it will probably help us a lot with what we can do here in the near term as far as modernizations and knowing what we want to do to improve our efficiency with that work. And then baseball field, you have the seven hundred and fifty thousand for the fixed fifty-foot-high fence versus the eleven point one million to lower it to get the optimal CIAF distances and reconfiguration of the field. With that, I mean, I really think any questions that the board has with this company?
Well, I just want to point out, because I was doing facilities committee, the changes that have been done already and changes that are proposed for next year, and even the changes up here that may never happen, are all being contemplated to be dealt with existing money, not a school bond. We're not, at this point, contemplating a school bond. I'd say it's completely off the table. At this point, because of, well, I think it's a very good financial management, we are luckily in a position where we can use our own funds for these buildings. Most school districts, as you know, look at money for school buildings. It's money you have to take out of the general fund or other resources to do it. So I'm very happy with the plans I've seen, what we've accomplished already. I'm particularly happy with the CLC building and the new music room at Top of the World. I think the kids are going to benefit tremendously from that new facility. The idea of isolating a music room, kids, so it's a relatively sound person room is supposed to where they're doing it now. It's helpful to everybody. Same thing for El Moro. Other things I was a bit impressed with is the shade structures that are going to be going in at El Moro, because kids need shade, and personally, some of the trees that used to give shade, but, I don't know, the roots, they passed away. They're no longer living. So there's a lot of good stuff there. I appreciate all the work that's been done on this, and we've got a lot of options for the future, I guess. Things change.
And when is this coming back to us to approve the, the prescriptions?
I think we'll bring it back next meeting, most likely, unless there's some reason that, for some reason, there's a shortage of people waiting or something.
I'm always glad that we can use some of the FERC money. I could never figure out why we're putting all this stuff away, and then we're just, oh, we're going to sit on it and watch it do something? I mean. I wondered about that too. I was going to say, that or something finally qualified. Like HVAC, I mean, that's in roofing, those when FERC was set up. That's what I thought, that's what I. That was identified as when the, when their useful life ended, they were going to be more costly than routine maintenance. And so that's why the FERC was established, to stay for that.
Right.
So I'm glad that you've made that.
It's a very diligent plan, it's been in place for a long period of time, and it's a, it's a great plan. And it's built off a twenty-year plan versus a ten-year plan. And.
But it has been twenty years, yes?
Yeah, it's been, yeah, it's, no.
Two thousand four.
We're, we're getting there.
We're in the ballpark.
What the idea of is, is it's a major replacement. And so we, we are seeing some of those because of where we're at with the weather and the, you know, the ocean, stuff like that, those replacements. So the, the replacement cycles can be different, the cost escalation can be different, and that, that program can be, can get stagnant over time. So one, one of the things that we looked at, we've already done two million projects, two million dollars of projects that could have been, you know, charged that. However, if there wasn't enough money, that that would run through. So in the plan that we have now, has considerably more things than what we accomplished through the plan, but we'll, we'll fund it at a greater rate to make sure that plan is, maintains escalation ability, uses the cash flow for the projects that need to be done now, restores that money to make sure that we have that for the next replacements.
That was my question. So, so the plan is to spend it down as we need to, but backside replenish it as, as we.
Yeah.
To maintain our liabilities.
Right. And consequently, the actual capital improvement program actually has gone down. So the infusion of need to the capital improvement program is not as great, so.
Which means we will not be self-lending as much.
We don't have to self-lend as much. We don't have to self-lend as much, yeah. So, and in our plan, we're, we're pretty aggressive in that when we start planning a project, we obligate it and kind of say it's that year. But these plans tend to plan a little bit, then you get execution and then completion. They, they tend to run out two or three more years. And so the cash flow is not usually needed as quick as the plan has said. So, so right now, we might have already funded some of the capital improvement needs if we needed the cash flow. But we know that the high school stadium and track and field is planned for the spring. So even though it's in the 14, 15 planning cycle, most of that cost will happen at the end of 15, 16. And so you can see that we need the cash flow much early. So that fund has, you know, close to five million dollars in it, you know, 3.2 million dollar stadium. It can cover that cash flow without that need. Now, as we put the HVAC and lighting into that piece, we may need to infuse that a little bit in the short term. Maybe by a million dollars or something like that. But eventually that will build back up to the six million dollar range as we fund that out.
That also, the HVAC and stuff, that's also where we'll be able to use some of the grants and the, the 109 money and that.
So some of the things that we, we haven't figured into costs is the amount of the rebates, possible state option bonding type stuff. There's some donated funds related to, I mean, the concession restroom type things where high school was getting 50,000 dollars a few years ago. There was the intent that that facility, there might be a concession area where we might go raise money for donations, but we would kind of try to take ownership for the restrooms and the storage areas side of it. So if that develops, it's, it's now in the plan. It was one of those emissions where we said, well, we're doing the track and replacement field, but we are already doing the concession, we are already doing the restrooms over there. And it's like, well, that wasn't in the plan, but it is going to be in the later one.
So that building.
That building P is now.
Is now part of the plan.
That's going to actually exist.
I'll figure it out. I'll figure it out.
It's been a few years since.
Right. And I think it's maybe 18, 19 or something. So it's one of those out years, so.
But it's going to happen.
Yeah.
That's incredible.
Well, and then when you're, you're fixing spaces within spaces, in fact, you're looking for steam, stand and maker space in those is wonderful because that's what me and Chris talked about it, you know, what he wants to do. The fact that you can look at space already that needs maybe some renovation and it might, a little maintenance and it might be a good space without.
I have a couple of questions. Assuming that we get some more range than we've had, and that will the fields be back on next summer at Thurston?
We haven't got the clearance yet, but I've been working with the water district and the city to identify the target time. We're still looking at summer.
So you, I mean, if those things fall into place, we'll do it this summer?
Yeah, as soon as we can do it. And we'll work with our, our schools and also the user groups that use it AOSO. And we'll really can try to identify the best time, but we haven't received the green light quite yet.
I would, yeah, I wouldn't expect that yet. And then I just, I'm appreciative that you delved into the detailed enrollment data. Go back that far to really show the cycles. I think it's important. And I think that I also appreciate of your caution of how many years out you rely on the data because of so many things that can change and affect that. And since Bill mentioned that about the bond, I have to say that establishing the FERC and saving as judiciously as the district has for this number of years was the commitment made when the community supported and passed that bond to 59 million dollars for the schools. Because the criticism was that we had not taken care of our facilities. So when we went out and campaigned for that bond, the question was always, okay, now are we going to maintain the facilities? So I think it's, we've honored that commitment and there is a time in the future. At that time, people were saying, okay, we'll do this, but they'll never come and ask for this. Or again, we need to, you know, budget for that and take care of them. So we're doing that and it's, I appreciate it.
And looking at the way in the future, you know, we don't know what's going to happen.
No, we don't.
We've got this projection that might drop a little. 10 years ago, we had very, you know, thorough study that said we were having 800 today in the high school. It was wrong. And I just have this gut feeling that we're going to see an uptick in especially the high school. So already the high school is like molding at the seams.
I'm not really afraid of the student population as much as the finances and the fact that we have prepared for that. Because we're not going to get it from the state. I mean, even years ago, the matching funds for maintenance and things, I mean, those things are far away and it's not going to come back.
Yeah, it's good to look at the detail of the report if I, at my school level. And here we show district level and sometimes that doesn't always show what's happening at Top of the World or the high school. We've had some relief pressure now with Thurston as that ninth grade moved up to the high school. So, but there are, there are occasionally those grades there, but a lot of it drives off birth rates. But it doesn't drive off program. And so that's where the vision and program comes in. Is, is, you know, thinking about the program where you have and then thinking about what those facility needs are. We can plan for those. And I, I think there's some good excitement, thought process going on about, you know, what we want to do in the science and those other areas. And so those are developing and we'll adapt as we, as we see that develop.
Can I just, just clarifying? So the additional, the additional four million that we're looking at, are you going to budget, are you going to amend this year's budget to reflect that or will this be rolled into the 16, 17?
It's over the 10-year. It, that's four million over the 10-year plan.
Okay.
So it's not, there's none of that. Two of those projects are this summer slated for.
Right.
So they go like in the 16, 17 budget?
So, so that's same. Okay, so, so, okay, so they're, they'll be following your budget and then may or may not get done in that budget cycle, but the money will be there. It'll be earmarked for that in that budget year.
Right. Right.
So again, I want to thank you for, you know, putting together this plan. It's very comforting to have a 10-year plan. We can only amend it if things do go inside. I suspect they might if they do grow. We can amend it if they shrink, we can amend it. But at least we now have a 10-year plan which is well thought out. We've already accomplished great things and we can keep on making assumptions. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Keep on the comment. Thank you.
My name's Howard Hills and, you know, I've got some bad news for the board. I'm not going to always be coming here as a friend of the board to help you out the way I am, have been recently. And I'm looking forward to spending more time at the beach and more time with my family. But I do want to follow and, and stay with a couple of these issues until such time as I start dissenting myself from these meetings. You know, I think Mr. Dixon has done a great job and, and I would commend him. I would like to continue with the narrative though of saying that, you know, as this series of events has taken place between September 22nd and, and tonight's meeting, some of the comments that have been made, Board Member Vickers has emphasized that there was this judicious saving that was done. Yeah, that's right. From 2000 to 2015, we accumulated in addition to the state mandated 3% and the additional 2% uncertainty fund in the differential, in the basic differential fund, we've accumulated 17.9 million. Now, listen, I'm just a simple-minded person and I don't fully understand all the nuances of this. And I think, you know, Mr. West, as I said initially, when I commented on this, this may be the best plan in the world that anyone's ever come up with. And I certainly understand the cash flow and the, and avoiding borrowing costs and all that, and I'm supportive of that. But, you know, what seems to me, the bottom line here is that from 2012 to 2015, we were supposed to be putting money aside for our contribution for retirement benefits, for the health, cost of healthcare. We didn't do it. And so we ended up, instead of, you know, 500 and something thousand dollars a year, we ended up with 3.8 million dollar liability that we've now liquidated with 2 million dollars. That's been, that's, as I understand it, has come out of the Fund 17. And now you've got a 10-year plan. It's great to have a 10-year plan. It's a 14.2 million dollar plan. And you've, you've done each fund transfers, come up with first 1.4 million of that. And so a lot of money's moving around and it's hard to tell exactly where the line is between money that's going for cash flow and money that's actually going to be a builder for expenditure and isn't coming back. And so when you talk about replenishment, you're also talking about, I guess, revenues. And Board Member Brown, when this was being discussed, said she had a lot of confidence in your projections about the ability to replenish it. But in your board paper, you have a caution in there about the need for a plan in case replenishment projections don't turn out to be what you said they were. And so we've got a situation where now in the last couple of weeks, we've had all the stock market and suddenly those projections might not look as good as they did. But listen, I'm just a, you know, I don't really know too much about any of this, but. So in that context.
Again, I would just like to grant you 30 seconds.
I'll wait for 30 seconds. In that context, then, the subject of getting it right and keeping promises, keeping promises to the employees and to the faculty and that 30.5 million dollar liability that's looming out there. And I know Mr. West has a theory and a plan for liquidating that and I respect that. But I'm going to continue to study this and continue to share my views and concerns about it with the board, including in the next section about an important aspect of how this was done with the amendments to Board Policy 3001.
Deke, can we just make a clarifying statement? The, we did not pay our fair share of our health and welfare benefits. We did what we were required to do, then the state changed the rules on us.
Yes.
So, so that, or not even state, the government, GASB, whatever.
This might actually how I would say that. I guess there has been some accounting changes on the audit report side that come down to the government, national level for auditors. And it does expose debts that are out there in the realms of government agencies. And so some of that doing it is putting retiree benefits, which we've always had age 55 to 65, to get somebody that may have retired age 55 to Social Security, a health benefit thing. So those, those things have been put in place a long time, but they're not recent things. That obligation has existed for a long time. It's just now being presented as a liability and shown on our liability. The same thing with PERS and STIRS, it's GASB 60, 70, 68. Those are things that obviously the STIRS and PERS pensions have dealt with for a long period of time and their assets do not necessarily equal what their future liabilities would be. And that unfunded portion is now thrust upon school districts because we are the employer and that share has been, it goes on our other parts. So we have.
We always paid what we were supposed to be paying. We never.
Right. We always, we always pay the rate. Yeah. We don't have control over the PERS and STIRS rate. We only can pay the amount of the rate to, to that there, so. But, you know, in, in the OPEV, it's something that we said, hey, we know there's, the actuaries say it's 3.7 million. We'll put 2 million in. We put something towards that. Many districts have nothing put towards it. So, so we have, we have ability to, to do that. And, and obviously the financial, you know, the district is, you know, it's, it's ongoing management, right? And, and we do have a knowledge now that there's 30 million dollars that, you know, how STIRS and CalPERS says is our responsibility and it is on our other part. So it's on June 30th, 2015, our, one of the few districts in the state that has, has a positive net unrestricted ending balance after those liabilities were taken into consideration. So we're a very strong district and, you know, it's evidenced by the ratings increases with Moody's and Standard and Poor's already has such results.
And this change also changed cities too, is how the cities.
Oh, it was, yeah, so.
Because I know I've got emails on it of, you don't have a poor city to, you click on and realize that, oh, we're doing pretty well or.
It's part of the pension reform movement and, you know, following the Great Recession and some collapse of some of the government, I mean, the public agencies, it's also exposing that debt that's out there in government agencies as well.
Any else want to make a presentation on the facilities master plan? Any comment on it, sir?
Yes, please. Michael O'New. I've had the honor to speak to the board in the cabinet before. And I'm stepping up tonight, not particularly in relationship to what you have just discussed, but in terms of what I'm calling inclusion. I've called the district office four times and asked to be on the list to get information.
Can I interrupt you? I'm very sorry, but what we're supposed to be doing is discussing the master's facilities plan right now. The type of comment you're making should have been put into the public comment section.
I probably realize that, but I'm just making a plea for inclusion. You might have included some architects in what it is that you're doing. I realize that you've got the people you're working with, that our city is famous for a number of people. And if I hadn't been included after four requests, how would any architect know to participate? So I'll leave my presentation, but I just wish to be included. I've included my card with my email. I've been told that parents are automatically included. But in my previous comments to the board, I'm asking how other people are included who are not parents. And I'm one of those people.
Included, included in one.
Yeah, I, I called and asked when the board meetings are. I didn't get that. So I'm coming to the meetings. I have no idea what's going to be on the agenda. I have no idea what I could do to help you with. I have.
I emailed you all of that information, so if you didn't get it, I'm sorry, but it didn't bounce back to me, so I will send it again.
I, I did not receive it. The only thing that I received was the board meeting text.
Okay, just let you know, there is a website. All the board meetings are posted.
And agendas are all posted.
Gens are posted.
I appreciate that. I just want to make sure that there comes kind of outreach. Thank you, Brian.
Any other comments on this? Now moving on to first reading of board policies. Lisa Witz.
So we're bringing forward two board policies that we reviewed in the board policy committee. You just saw these not too long ago, I believe, last spring. The first one is Board Policy 4030, which is non-discrimination and it. And this policy has been updated to reflect the mandate to adopt a policy to implement the state's non-discrimination laws, particularly the new law, Assembly Bill 987, which prohibits districts from retaliating or otherwise discriminating against a person for requesting an accommodation for his or her disability or religious beliefs, regardless of whether the accommodation was granted. And the other board policy is 4121, temporary and substitute personnel. And this has been updated to reflect the new law, Assembly Bill 304, which amended the Healthy Families, or Healthy Workplaces, Healthy Families Act, which authorizes paid sick leave to employees who are not otherwise covered by a collective bargaining agreement. And so this authorizes the accrual based on, we can front-load it and then it doesn't carry over year to year. And it also restricts retired annuities who have not been reinstated into an employment position from receiving that paid sick leave.
Any questions, any discussion, any public comment?
Sorry, too many jokes.
Yeah, I'd like to, with respect to this agenda item, say that I want to talk about and process a little bit of these board amendments and policy revisions. You know, I've gone on record for a long time saying that I thought the board should cease and desist from the revision process that's been coordinated by the committee that has consisted of Board Member Vickers and the superintendent. I think among other things, that's actually a standing committee and should be subject to open meeting rules, and it's not. But I just want to say, let's take a case study on this process that you're using right here to do these first readings and second readings. Because, you know, the, the first reading and second reading provision that you're doing here tonight on, on these first readings and on the second readings on another item occur under Board, a Board Bilogue 9310. 9310 states that its provisions are binding on the board. And then proceeds to prescribe this process of first and second readings. And you can wait for the second reading. But one of the reasons I've been making all these points that I've been making tonight on this financial inter-fund, fund transfer issue is that everything you're doing, you know, I, I'm really, I'm not, you know, I'm really glad that Mr. West is here because we would be lost at sea without an anchor if it weren't for Mr. West. I respect his work, but I don't think, if, if, if everything you've said tonight in response to the concerns I've raised is true, if this thing that you're doing with these buildings that you're doing, and if we really have the money for the 30.5 billion for pension unfunded liability, it's all the more important then that you get it right and do it right. And my point is that when you amended Board Policy 3001 on November 9th, that amendment did not go through a first reading and a second reading process. And therefore, if it's really important, you know, you, Mr. Board Chairman, President, you said that this building program was your legacy. You used the word legacy. And whenever anybody's spending tax dollars uses the word legacy, that sends out a lot of red flags for a lot of people. And if this really is your legacy, then you got a problem. And if this really is your legacy, then you got a problem. Because it's a higher reading, maybe I'm wrong. Hope the board will take cognizance of this matter and do some research. Maybe talk to the lawyers and find out if I'm wrong. But I think your amendments to Board Policy 3001 that you did on November 9th were in violation of Board Bylaw 9310, which requires first and second reading. And I don't remember, and I haven't, can't, can't find anything in the record to indicate that there was a waiver of second reading. And so I think you need to go back, unless, I may get wrong.
And if I'm not able to tell you over time, but I will send you the courtesy of 30 seconds.
Thank you very much for that courtesy. I think that there's a serious question that I'd like to help out if I can. Um, but I would like to know why, when the amendment was done to Board Policy 3001 on November 9th, there was no first and second reading in compliance with Board Bylaw 9310, which by some terms is binding unless you amend it. And if you amend it, you gotta go through the first and second reading process, and you didn't on November 9th. So, maybe it's the minimums, maybe it doesn't matter, maybe I'm wrong, but I just thought, wanted to bring it to your attention.
Okay, and I don't like to respond to public comment, but I will want to clarify something I've never said. But I believe any kind of legacy law prevents. Don't think I did. What I said was, we collectively need to leave a legacy to our children, our additional classrooms, whatever needed, or improvements in the school district. And it is a district thing, I have little of anything to do with it. Uh, moving on, oh, we're good.
Will you have Mr. West, or have Dr. Schneff send the information about the committees and what type of people are around tonight? We have, okay, but it's legal to have, maybe, so we have board's-
We've done that before, we'll do it again.
Okay, yeah.
Are these ready to go for second reading the next week?
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to number 60, approval of Career Technical Education Incentive Grant Program, Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, between the Laguna Beach Unified School District, LPUSD, and South Coast Regional Occupational Program.
There's approval.
So that was Kenna and Jen.
We're close enough. Okay, we are respectfully asking for your approval, your action on this memorandum of understanding with South Coast ROP. Uh, we are engaged in the Career Technical Education Incentive Grant with them as our partner. They will be receiving no funding for this partnership, but will continue to work with us as part of their function as an ROP to add additional classes as needed and, and help us to identify our career technical education pathways. Uh, the intent, as it says, the purpose of the agreement is to establish a cooperative and mutually beneficial relationship between the parties and to set forth the responsibilities of the parties related to the implementation of that grant. And the grant information, once again, is we are receiving $177,000 this year. It's a matching funds grant based on our earlier efforts for career technical education. And that amount, it's on the very last page, I thought it was, will actually decrease over time. Um, the second year, we will receive $133,000, and the third year, $88,800. We don't see any difficulty in matching it because we're already funding some of those programs internally anyway. Uh, this will help to further our efforts for, for technical education.
Any discussion on the second?
This is a big deal.
Well, you know, our, our, actually, so, so important, we'll get to that a little bit later tonight, but, uh, it's important. Okay, all in favor?
All in.
Public comment? Moving now to, number 70, second reading of board policies. We have a second reading of board policies A through F. I'll handle this individually, together, I have one. Any comments?
I'm feeling all of them because these are all based on new laws and, and new changes, or? Something just educational, perhaps, the issue.
Do you have any questions?
I just have some questions about C.
C?
Okay.
So we're talking about Board Policy 5, 1, 3, 2.2, bold.
Right. Um, and it was just clarification at the, at the end, last page. It also, at the very last paragraph, any employee who commits or engages in bullying or child behavior related to bullying shall be subject to disciplinary action up to and including dismissal. So, the rest of it was all about student, students, and then that month last part relates to adult employees.
It's, it's part of the, because bullying is part of the uniform complaint procedures. Um, part of that has to do with no bullying or discrimination or harassment by employees either. But for the most part, when we're dealing with bullying and harassment, uh, it would be more of a, a student disciplinary issue. So that's why most of the policy deals with intervention and prevention, education, and discipline of students. But because it is part of that uniform complaint process that does cover employees as well, um, we, we would want to put something in there that, that does make sure that we prohibit it amongst everyone in our school district, not just the students.
Right, so somebody in the school district felt they're an adult, a teacher, say, or a, felt they were being bullied or harassed, this all applies to them, they would?
The definition of bullying would still apply, the same definition, um, and that it would be part of the uniform complaint process, um, where they would file a uniform complaint.
And I would add to that, as an HR function, that would be a function of human resources, at least I might do a clarification.
Yeah, so it would be, they follow the uniform complaint process, we would, uh, follow our procedure with that.
Okay.
And I'm the example for that.
So can you just briefly tell us what the procedure is for the record?
Um, sure.
Someone had a complaint.
So if someone had a complaint, they would file that written complaint. There's, um, the, uh, places for them to fill out what happened, who could be potential witnesses, on what basis they're filing the complaint, so were they discriminated, bullied, harassed, based on a number of criteria, and those are all listed on the form. Um, and then there's an investigation that occurs, and we have 60 days to respond. So then we develop a written response within 60 days and, and identify the allegations and whether or not they were substantiated. And of course, if there's disciplinary action taken, that information is not shared with the complainant because of privacy rights of employees.
So prior to this adoption, was there anything that similar policy or rules respecting a possible personnel action against an employee?
That would have taken place regardless of this policy, that's, that's also identified in the uniform complaint process.
It's more or less a restatement of existing rules or law.
And is, is the form online, under our website, or?
It is, it, there's a section called complaints, there's the uniform complaint process, the Williams complaint process, all of that's listed there.
Okay, and then what, what are the possible repercussions if we just found to be true?
Well, there's a variety of disciplinary actions that could be taken. It really just depends on the nature of the allegation that's substantiated. Um, it depends on prior occurrences, what's in the disciplinary file, it can vary widely. Um, it could be, you know, we, we use progressive discipline. So depending on the seriousness of, of the case, it could be, you know, a, a conference memo, a letter of reprimand that gets placed in the file, it could be result in suspension or termination.
A lot of things in between, I imagine.
Yes.
One thing too, depending on Lisa, what a complaint is made, there might, a person might be put on leave until it is resolved.
Correct.
If it was a serious, maybe, issue.
Yes.
Same, same for a student, might be suspended until such information is investigated.
And then is bullying also covered in the contracts that are on the website as well, for the different groups?
Our collective bargaining-
Yeah, your question.
Yeah, we have a section in both contracts that is called professional courtesy, and it structures a process, um, and it really can be used in concert with uniform complaint. But uniform complaint is, is a law that's triggered, and, and certain timelines are triggered. So certainly if there's some kind of discrimination or harassment allegations, we really have to jump to the uniform complaint process, and it really supersedes that professional courtesy. Professional courtesy is when two employees are perhaps having a dispute, and that's a process for them to utilize where they work it out, try to work it out together. And if they can't do that, then it goes to intervention by the site or the su, immediate supervisor, and so on down the line. But sometimes it comes up that we need to go right to that uniform complaint process.
Also, in following that up, if you look at 17.8, it does say within two business days. I mean, that's, it has to be an immediate judgment.
Yes.
Other questions, comments, or any other section?
I would actually just like to say thank you for, um, the detailed reasoning as to why this happens. And I, it's, it makes-
Been a lot of new laws.
Well, I know, but that's, I mean, I did so much research, it's like, okay, this, it's because of this, it's right there. For me, I'm, I'm all about synopsis, thank you.
Okay, good, all in favor?
Okay.
We all in favor?
Fine. Oh, do we?
We didn't make, make a motion to-
I wanted to, they wanted to-
Well, it's all we do, basically.
Oh, you know, we wanted to know if they wanted them individually or not.
Oh, okay, so, let us, we get a motion to approve items A through L in section 2. All in favor? Thank you for covering that up. Moving to number 18. Approval of Curriculum Committee Recommendations for a New Course, Career Technical Education, CTE, 3D Design, and Prototype Development.
Second.
Jen and Kenna. We didn't, we didn't leave.
So sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
Ready. The next three items are all, a little bit off there. The next three items are all a result of our latest curriculum committee meeting. Um, these are not random acts of brilliance on the part of teachers, but there are things that are investigated over time. Um, lots of communication with the principal, um, and, and conversation about how it could take place and what the implications might be. And then the committee, uh, we asked for a pretty detailed report from the teachers about the details, the research that they've done, the cost to, to us, et cetera. And, and the, the staffing implications, which can be dataized.
And facilities and technology.
And facilities, thank you, yes. So we deliberately have my cut as well, and defer to Jeff quite frequently as well. Uh, so the first one is the Career Technical Education, 3D Design and Prototype Development. What this course will do is complete our CTE pathway in media arts and, and art production. And this is, this is the class that Carol referred to. Scott Whitkop is, was willing to go to Saddleback College and take another course. He is a CTE credential teacher. And it will, uh, actually give industry, uh, use of industry software, industry equipment to students in a course which is called a capstone class, meaning they would complete the pathway with the highest level of application that the industry would recognize and use. It would, if the students progress through the pathway, they would also qualify for distinction on their, on their transfer.
And is this the one that will allow for dual credit for dual?
Yes, these are dual credit courses. So Saddleback has agreed to take all of the Career Technical Education courses for dual credit. We're still working out the details, that's going to happen any minute now, but we'll, we'll make that happen as well, which is really exciting. He has a, a number of students really, really engaged in this program. They are making things with the 3D printer that I can't even define. I don't really even know what 3D Design and Prototype is going to do, it's going to be at really high levels. Uh, it does involve the purchase of some specific equipment, um, some supplies for ongoing development, and also new computers for this program to run the CAD software, the engineering related software. Uh, so we're, the, the impact budget wise is our CTE incentive grant, uh, some general fund budgets, and also our Perkins Grant funds. And Perkins, uh, money is we are in a JPA with Saddleback Valley, and we receive about $8,000 to $10,000 a year to support our CTE initiatives. So that's a little bit of funding as well, Carol, I'm sorry.
No, it's just one of the things they're printing is they're making 3D printers.
Yeah.
They're using, they're all printers to make 3D printers.
The parts.
What a machine, you can't actually make a whole printer.
Amazing, from, isn't that something? Well, actually, it's in the RoboHans project, which was so exciting for them.
They brought those in.
And there's some additional ROP will be involved, and then some more activities like that this year. So, the excitement from Scott Whitkop for the committee was amazing, so we're starting to see, because it's pretty exciting.
Do you have any breakdown on, of these street funding sources, how much, from the general?
De and I sat down a little bit and talked today, we want to look at the bigger picture and actually explore the CTE grant, which is going to be awarded like next week, to, to make sure that, what makes the most sense.
Okay. And then, um, Scott was willing to do the work for the high school to get the ACG?
Mm-hmm.
Because I know other times when people have presented, like in the dance, or whatever, they, teachers have said that they would be willing to do that.
Right.
Will it, will it facilitate that since ROP already has that?
That's, she said that, we talked about that. They will want, they do have one, I think, that, Daniel said.
I thought she said that, because it's already, because it's already at Saddleback.
Right, so we didn't have to read-
Oh, it's at the college, or?
Yeah, at the college, right.
Okay, so we don't, we won't have to submit that application?
No, no, we just have to check the box, we have to go in, we have to submit, but it's a tech account, it will be cash.
Yeah, and will you be teaching this within the bell schedule?
Yes, this is within the bell schedule, and it will take the place, uh, it's not requiring additional staffing because this fifth period class will be Odyssey Worker Recovery Class. So we're picking that, Chris is picking that up in another way with more stuff.
Sounds great.
It's very exciting. You'll have to come and see it when he gets it, he wants everybody to come.
Any other discussion, public comment?
Couple more bad news, it's going to be my last comment tonight. My name's Howard Hills. I just wanted to say in front of you that I support all three of these, uh, this and the subsequent two items. And I commend the Curriculum Committee for advancing this, and I most particularly commend the teacher for being willing to undergo the training and career development so that he can deliver this for the students. And I, you know, Assistant Superintendent Messenger, the thing about it is, is it's okay if we don't understand what this is, because the kids do.
Right.
You know, and, uh, when I worked for Congressman Mark Walker, he was on the science committee. I used to go with him to visit various companies that use this technology. And, uh, I didn't understand it while I was watching it, but the, the stuff they're doing with it is amazing. Um, so I just want to conclude by, uh, saying that, um, that, you know, in the, in the, in the spirit of, you know, doing, getting it right and keeping promises, um, I, I guess I want to find out more about the Curriculum Committee and how it operates and everything, because I want you to know that, um, Winjing, who spoke earlier about the fact that she had anticipated that there would be discussion of the math pathways tonight. Um, um, she's very polite, a person. And, uh, I can tell you that, um, there are a lot of people, uh, there was a lot of email traffic, a lot of telephone, uh, traffic, a lot of, uh, uh, concern about the fact that, um, you know, the concept of keeping promises, you had said at the last meeting that, that that would be on the agenda tonight, the math pathways. And a lot of people who were very active in that area and, and felt very dissatisfied with the choices that were made last year about the math pathways, were pathways, were looking forward to re-engaging. And, um, there was a lot of traffic about the fact that when the agenda came out, it wasn't on, and, uh, people sort of were pretty frustrated. And she, um, God bless her, is just a very well-mannered person, and very polite and sweet and gentle person. So it's up to me to also try to be nice about it, say that, um, I want you to know that there, uh, that a lot of people felt like, look, when you have all those parents with all that passion, um, and, and the superintendent's talking about this year being the theme of innovation and whatnot, but, um, and it would just be a no-brainer to include them in the process. And basically what they were told was that other parents had been consulted, and not them. And I think that there, you know, I think that, and again, going back to the theme of keeping promises, it would have been a really good idea, and it would still be a good idea between now and the next meeting, to, um, bring those people in and invite those people in and include them in the process. Um, uh, no matter what the actual outcome of it may be, I think that, uh, there was a lot of concern about non-inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, all in favor, or any other public comment for it, focus? All in favor of this, um, number? Okay, we're moving on to number 19, that's a similar item, approval of Curriculum Committee Recommendations for a New Course, Engineering Technology, uh, motion?
Second.
Kenna and Jen.
This is a course brought forward by Jen Mir, a science teacher at the high school. Um, she is planning to work with the University of Texas at Austin, who will fund half of the project to the cost of about $9,000 for us. Uh, sounds like a really exciting process, uh, class that will give students an option for learning more about engineering. We really are very focused on including STEM as, in as much, in as many of our courses as we possibly can, and our teachers are very excited. And as we roll out the next generation of science standards, that's a necessary side benefit of doing so, because the engineering standards are in all of the science standards. That's, that's one of the biggest changes. So this was a, a really great, uh, it will be an actual record course for students, So this was a really great, it will be an actual record course for students, but it could also serve to tie some of the science concepts together and be pretty exciting for kids. So she's really excited about it, it sounded like a great option for us.
Well, I was awed very heavily by my daughter, two voters. She says she's going to take this class, and I don't know when in the world in her twelve-hour day this fits in, but she's determined.
Do you also be in the bell schedule?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is in the bell schedule, I was about to say it, I don't know how that
She's generous when to teach it.
Yes.
So is it something, is she teaching it instead of something else, or is she coming?
Uh, I do that.
She helps.
She's on, she's on.
Because I asked her, she was going to ask.
And she's, she's pulling kids from another class, so it doesn't, it's not actually going to be an additional, she, she believes it will be a bridge between, I can't remember which two of the science classes, but
She wanted to be concurrent with physics, but that's what we're not, we're not
Another elective option is what she, is what she Yeah, so, so given, and it's just
Senior year option, right, basically.
Right, exactly.
Discussing for several reasons. Is it a renewable grant from Texas?
Uh, that's a good question, I do not know, well, it's a three-year, it's a three-year, first year is eighteen thousand, nine thousand annually for three years. So, so it's a three-year program, basically, and she's already been accepted.
And I'm sure at this amount of money, we could take it on ourselves, if it wasn't
Well, she did say the good thing, it's already a box, you know, from the University of Texas, but also they were tasked with making sure that whatever renewables were easily accessible, like Home Depot, so that it didn't, it, it's not, it's not expensive to, to replenish what we use. And she, her big point was, it's not like chemistry where they blow everything up.
And they burn their
And it already has the approval, so we don't, it doesn't have to be
Yeah, so it is eighteen.
It's already been eighteen, sorry.
Yeah, it is not, it's not a brand-new pilot for T E. Unfortunately, they don't
It's an established program.
Established program. We have a room to accommodate it.
Yeah, she's going to make do, she's figuring out how she's going to do that, because I said we'd love to give her that new building, but that's going to be a while. So she said she could be creative in the meantime. And then sort of working with the university too, is that they are looking, they're helping us with evaluation, to make sure that it's a reliable program, so that's
So is this a non-reading course?
It is.
All right, all in favor?
I'm in.
Moving on, number twenty, which is approval of curriculum committee recommendation for a new program, I guess.
Done with approval?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. I think Jen and Kevin.
Mandarin, we've had a, we've had an after-school Mandarin program being taught by a consultant for the past, I don't know how long, as long as I've been here, it exists, when I got
Going a couple ways.
In a little ways, and we have about twenty to twenty-five students who over time have been engaged in various levels. It ended up being an after-school program, both at Thurston and at the high school, and a summer school program as well. And a number of the students who took the course actually passed the industry standard test, the, you know the letters, MK, it's the hotel proficiency test, that says you are ready to work in that industry and that you are proficient in Mandarin. We would like to build that into the school day for students, so it's another option in addition to Spanish and French. And we think it will be viable over time, we're proposing it starting with probably a small program, but we believe by the time students reach high school, we'll be able to, you know, continue to grow that program. It's all subject to the number of students who are interested in it, and next month it'll be rolled out as an option, depending on your approval. If that happens, then Lisa and I have to go to work to find an adequate teacher. We believe we're proposing
More than that.
Yeah, actually, exceptional.
There it is. We're proposing two sections, the wheel at, of a Thurston as one section, and also a Mandarin one, and a Mandarin one and two at the high school. And they would be combined, combined at first because students are at four different levels.
You know, I, I really am high on this, we've only offered the two languages, because we're small, I mean, we only do this unfortunately, the negative is being small. So this gives us that third choice, a very different choice for people who are interested in that, so
Did we try to go on this for the high school?
Did we what?
Did we try to go on that Thursday? At Thurston, I thought we tried at the high school with putting it on the options and
No, we, we ran it at Thurston last year, and she didn't get enough students. But this year, we're, we're kind of asking for your, your indulgence to start with a fairly small program if we're able to actually staff it. Because there is a lot of interest in my own growth.
It may, we may have to just subsidize small classes for a while, because to build something, you might have to do that. And I think it's worth the investment.
And we, we talked about that too.
Sometimes, there are, there are classes like ACR and things like that, where you know it's going to be small, but you need to have it.
We want to build a strong program.
Build it, no contest.
Public comment?
I would really just totally recommend this course, and the reason why is my daughter Serena Johnson was one of the first students in the program when it started many years ago, along with Gwen Myers' son Morgan, and a few other kids, and maybe there was ten, or eleven, or twelve, but Morgan went on and really took the test and took it over, so to speak. Where because it was an after-school program and it was a summer program, the kids didn't get to do other things. So persistent mother said, yes, you're in the program, you have to stay in it. And, you know, perhaps that was not the best idea, because she missed out some of the things at the high school. Offering it in a regular class schedule, I think will really have more students signing up and still allow our students to partake of the other activities of the after-school programs, the drama, whatever else they want to pursue. So I would recommend it completely.
I should add, we have one more question, is there an AP Mandarin course? Is that the robbery, is there such a thing?
Yes, sure.
Yeah, I think there is.
Maybe something down the line in the works.
Right.
All right, any other comments, all in favor?
I'm in.
Number twenty-one is award of architectural service contract, Ruda, I guess that is Clark, for design work related to ADA upgrades at the Artist Theater, as required by the Division of the State Architects, will need amount up to exceed ninety-seven thousand dollars, includes three thousand for reimbursable expenses, Mr. West.
Right. We, we, I think I'll break Jeff's direction up forward to kind of explain this one, because there is a, the questions on, we, we did have in the plan, you know, to do air conditioning and ventilation, and the, this has to do with ADA upgrades and things that we found, and going through old PSA closeouts, and we just received PSA closeout on the Egress driveway just the other day, or
I don't know.
I don't know, yes. So, good job, they, they continue to close out the SA project, the SA project. And I think this is one of the ones that maybe you can explain, Jeff, with the architecture.
Sure, thank you, Ms. West, Mr. President, members of the board. We have been working very hard to close out all of our non-certified projects. In most cases, you can get a history of paperwork that shows that you're in full compliance with all the construction that was supported by the state architect. In the theater's case, because of the ADA improvements that were done in the past, and a lift that did not necessarily work from the floor to the orchestra pit to the stage, we're going to have to do other modifications to make sure it's in full compliance with American with Disabilities Act, upon which we would be able to close that project with certification. Right now, it is not certified. And as we look to do any sort of improvements at the high school, if you have a non-certified project, you can't do any other construction, so this is fairly important, in addition to being in compliance with ADA. And the architect's fees is included in the total project cost estimate of seven hundred and fifty thousand, which was in the updated plan I shared with you earlier. And we just have a range, and we have to figure out the exact scope and how we can add the wheelchair lifts to make sure that we meet the compliance.
Any discussion? Public comment? You read them, all in favor?
I'm in.
Moving to number twenty-two, award of contract to Kletten Industries, or to Kletten Industries, to provide services or adding scrutiny camera monitoring assistance throughout the district ethylate, eighty-five dollars per dollar, not exceed ten thousand dollars, can I motion?
Will it prove? Yeah.
So that, Kevin and Jan?
As I mentioned at the last meeting, we had several vitals incidents at the high school, evoking, you know, our obviously response to kind of, to, to stop that kind of activity, Jeff was responsible for the repairs. Public, the high school owners were involved as well in the project about, you know, how do we make sure we take an interim solution? The long-term solution is leveraging and moving along the lines of all of our security initiatives on risk management and other types of things, and so this, this is an individual that has done thousands of cameras and can help us meet the learning curve in that area, deal with something else, what I, what Jeff, okay. So this is an individual, Mike Morrison has brought, brought to my attention, and, you know, we have a very strict division of duties when it comes to this area, where facilities are responsible for putting a system in place. I'm responsible for monitoring, make sure that those are appropriate areas. Public area is always requires not, obviously restrooms or other private types of areas, so that, that's kind of my responsibility. And then the data side is the ITs, so they secure that data flow and things like that. So this, this individual has worked in, like I said, over thirty-plus sites, over a thousand cameras, leveraging that, even to be able to bring that video monitoring to the police department. So if there was an emergency scenario, they could bring it up right away and see what's going to happen on the quad cameras, and they can have access to that in order in an emergency type scenario.
Because that was one of my own question, was to make sure that, because we talked about it a couple of years back, we're talking about putting surveillance cameras in the office, I believe, is that right?
Or in the hallway.
Or the hallway somewhere, but then it was like, we worried, is it, you know, whose rights are you trampling on and whatnot?
So this is, this consultant helped us come up with a plan, primarily at the high school, but it does go district-wide as far as the scope of this building, but the majority focuses on high school.
So I consider things like whether it's after hours and weekends or during the day.
Right, when is it recording, when is it reflected, is it on?
Well, we have some cameras now, don't we, that, and they're not on during the day.
Right, and we always hope with signs that say that we're not monitoring it for any purposes, but most of these, these cameras are taken up, if there's an incident, then we go pull the, pull the camera and then take a look at what, what happened.
And we hope it does that again, we had some very expensive animals, number one. The other thing was, as you mentioned, if there's an act computer, we can give access to police, but it should help them like so as well, with any.
Any public comment on this?
Margaret Water, and I'm representing CSCA at the moment. We have discussed this, and as far as the employees that would be working in the areas, when the cameras may be on with Ms. Winston and Mr. West, and of course, we're concerned with the safety of our employees and not monitoring our employees. And so with this proceeding, the employees would be notified of the potential safety that this offers and not that they are being looked at for evaluations. So that has been a collaborative discussion, and would move forward with that. So we are totally in favor of the protection of the property and in the safety of the employees working on these sets.
All right, thank you, want to keep everybody safe with, with vandalism. Any other public comment? All in favor?
I'm in.
Number twenty-three, have a motion for adjournment?
Come on.
Kevin and Carol. Our next regular meeting in the Board of Education is Tuesday, February ninth, two thousand sixteen, six p.m. at the Lourenzini High School, Mr. Robinson, for All in favor?
I'm in.